Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. My name is Don Swiker and I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, I have Mike Stein.
Morning.
To my right, I have Nan Fliebel.
Morning.
Bjorn from I T, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann is in the back, and right now, first up is visitors and citizens. Are there anybody online or in person that would like to address the board today? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ruth from the Veterans Affairs Office with an departmental update. Good morning.
So our office stats for August were actually a lot higher than they than they had been. So that was exciting. We had fifty seven in-person visits from veterans and family members. We took a hundred and twenty three phone calls, not to mention emails, faxes, those kind of things. We did six intent file forms, six disability claims were filed, we did one supplemental claim, one higher level review claim, three applications for VA healthcare. There were fourteen decisions made in August for the the claims that have been filed over the past year. There are seventy six open claims and we filed seventy nine percent of those claims. As far as July, four hundred and twenty three veterans and eligible family members received eight hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars in compensation. On September sixteenth, which is today, the Iowa Association of County Veteran Service Officers is holding a virtual training for our VA commissioners. So that'll be done via Microsoft Teams, or they can call in and have that training as well. The Fall County Commissioner Training is on Monday, October thirteenth in Des Moines. That's also something that if any of you were interested in attending, you could. So I can send out, I sent out that information in an email, but I can send it out again as well. The Fall County Veteran Service Officer Training is October twenty first through the twenty third. We will be going, our office will be going. They're giving out a little over eleven continuing education credits, so those are, those are much needed. So our office will be closed, but I will have the work laptop and the cell phone, so I can still get ahold of people and return calls and things. As far as community outreach, we did, I did the newspaper article on Chapter Thirty Five DEA benefits. I think that's a benefit that a lot of maybe veterans, spouses, eligible dependents don't know is available, and at the start of the school year, it's a good thing. It's a benefit paid directly to the dependent of the veteran. If they are going to pursuing some kind of higher education trade program, college, the veteran has to be a hundred percent permanent and total disabled. But it is a, is a benefit. The, if you are attending college, a university full-time, the benefit right now is fifteen hundred dollars a month. Paid to the eligible dependent. Yeah, and for spouses, I mean, that's, that's huge if you have, you know, have a veteran that's, that's disabled, or if you're, you're a child of a disabled veteran. And it works eighteen to twenty-six for eligible dependents. Spouses obviously can be any age. So, yeah, kind of a, it's a great program if your veteran is eligible, so I wanted to get that information out there.
I apologize. Did you say that was something new, or is that?
It's not new.
No, but people just don't know about it, or is?
Think it's, it's kind of a confusing benefit, because when you get your rating decision letter, if you've been rated a hundred percent permanent total, it says, oh, you're now eligible for these Chapter Thirty Five DEA benefits. And it's like, well, what's that mean, right? How do you figure it out?
That fifteen hundred, is that just a one-time payment? Like, if you have a spouse, is that per?
It's up to, it's, I think it's thirty-six months of education benefits. Now, that is if you are going full-time.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that fifteen hundred dollar payment to the spouse, is that?
Everyone.
Just one, or if you have a spouse and three dependents, it's fifteen hundred bucks. If you have a spouse, it's, or is it fifteen hundred per? Wow.
Yeah, so if, because, because the benefit doesn't go to the veteran. The benefit goes to the dependent. The dependent is the one that's eligible for it, based on the veteran. So it doesn't matter if the veteran has ten kids, and they're all between the ages of eighteen and twenty-six, and they are going to school. Every single one of them could be eligible for that benefit.
Nice.
So it's huge. I mean, if you look at the, you know, the impact of that on someone's debt load for college.
Yes.
So, yes, I'm hoping we get some calls on that. Obviously, not everyone is going to be eligible, meet the eligibility requirements, but if we can help somebody kind of navigate that process, we'd love to do that.
Keep digging. These things are out there, and it's just nice to know.
Yeah.
Apply when we can.
Yep, exactly, exactly. So that is all I have, unless you have any questions.
You have somebody waiting for you, isn't it?
I do. I do. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Next up, we got Jayden from the Gunny Engineers Office.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we have a utility permit for Lamont Telephone Company to install fiber in right-of-way along three hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue to serve the address of twenty-one by five-one, three seventy-fifth Avenue. So it's just extending from a vault they already have on the road going about half a mile further down the road to extend it to the next address. Won't be on the road, just be on the east side of the roads. So our department sees no issues with it, pretty standard, so we recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, seconded by Mike, to approve the Lamont Telephone Company utility permit for underground fiber on three seventy-fifth Avenue, Bellevue Township, section twenty, twenty-seven and thirty-four, to service twenty-one by five-one, three seventy-fifth Avenue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Quick update, I guess. Just got word today that Prairie Creek Conservations Project, they'll be driving pile for that, well, one of the two bridges tomorrow, so our department will be there to inspect pile driving on behalf of Conservation. Our crews, as of yesterday, I think you all received the notification for the road closure, or bridge closure. That, so our crews are up there actually removing the old bridge as we speak, and.
That's gonna be a box culvert?
Two cul, or corrugated metal tube, sixty-six inch size pan.
Is that further to the east on that road? I was looking at the map, and I was trying to figure out whether there's a smaller bridge that would, a culvert be that one, that creek that's going to there, a larger.
So that's Lido's Creek.
That's to the west.
So this bridge is to the east, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yep, and so this week, they're, they cleared some of the area, because it was so full of trees and brush, that we couldn't get a bunch of survey shots at that time. So now that it's cleared, our staff is up there getting remainder of survey shots, so we can finalize the orientation of the culvert, so we can get that ordered, so we can get that placed in when it comes. It should take about a couple of weeks.
Okay. And I see on the, on the closure that it could be up to a month. I mean, is that?
That's to give our guys enough time, just because, I mean, if it was replaced as a bridge, it'd be closed for a month, so.
Your, your farmer friends are gonna get a little excited the way things are happening right now with this ninety-degree weather, yeah?
Yeah. Just wanna give ours, I didn't wanna order the tube ahead of time and have it be wrong, because it is steep slopes. I wanted to fit in there, the channel nice, so the slopes all are as gentle as they can be. And needed for it to be cleared before we could do that, so my thought was, well, if we were to replace it as a bridge, as we typically do, I mean, it's closed for about a month, so if it's closed for us to replace it as a culvert for a month, yes, it is.
Yeah, well, along with the improvement comes a little pain.
Little headaches, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
It'll be nice not to have the restriction of a bridge and things like that for equipment purposes and all that kind of stuff, you know. It, it is what it is, and with harvest coming down, we'll, we'll be expedient as we can, or expeditions as we can. But again, we still gotta make sure it's done right and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, so I just put in there, it shouldn't take a month, but I just wanted to give enough flexibility for our guys.
So will it be impassable that whole time, or just kind of?
Yeah, so the bridge will be out.
Yeah.
So, and it's fenced accordingly. So there's obviously barricades so far in advance, but then there's actual fence safety closures across the road.
Speaking of bridges.
Which one?
We're getting into almost October, Morehead Bridge.
So it'll be this fall, so I actually talked to Dan.
We're getting to fall. That's, that's kind of my hint, is.
Fall, early winter, so he's gonna start our two-day labors starting October fifteenth. He'll start the first one, and then depending on how his crews line up, but then he'll start the second one sometime thereafter. And then following that is when it's planned for him to move to Moreheads.
I think it's smart to leave it closed during harvest, because that's an awful temptation to, uh.
And there has been, actually, there's been a couple of calls yesterday to our office asking about the same thing, about when it's gonna be repaired. Did mention same thing, and also that when it's repaired, it's gonna be only open to its fifteen-ton weight. It's not gonna be back to an unre, it won't be an unrestricted bridge.
Did you hear any groans then about that, or?
No, I think, I mean, I do appreciate that patience, but I think there's at least knowing that it will get reopened, I think, helps. But it has been, it'll be about a year now. Come January, it'll be a year.
Yeah.
That's been closed.
So.
And Channelworth bid opening through the DOT is in November, so you know, there would be a little bit of time before that would start kind of who the winning contractor is, but.
So I guess with the Morehead Bridge, is that something we gotta bid out, or RFP, or is that?
No, for just repair, no, that's just for more.
Yeah, is that something we're doing, or we got a company to do that?
We already got the design, the pair, design, and informed Dan, our bridge contractor, he's got the green light to go ahead and fix it, so.
Okay.
No, that's just regular maintenance, just repairing it, so.
Okay.
I did have some calls, or some comments, you know, in the public commending the roadwork. Their re, their reclaim process and the roads, they're, they'd like them, they're looking good, and they think we're doing it, they're, you guys are doing a great job. I also had a couple that said that, and I understand that with the reclaim process, and they have been not upgrading as much, but there's some of these hills and some of these are getting in dire need. Some grading here and there, so.
And some of, I'll let it break, no, some, there is a double-edged sword with that, with washboards on hills when it is dry. Because once we start blading it, you actually disturb it more. It's more prone to washboard again faster and worse. It takes moisture to get that stuff packed in. So there is a double-edged sword, so I just want anybody in the public to be aware that we can do what we can, but it, it will, until we get moisture, it will return and be worse, because we're loosening up the material that's already not compacted in there.
Yeah, no, they don't wanna hear that, but the point is, I did have the opportunity to talk to Rick, and we, we talked about different areas, and that's all good, so.
Sometimes truth is hurtful.
Right. Did I hear we have a new piece of equipment in?
Yes, our skid loader arrived, and skid loader and mulching head, or skid loader arrived yesterday. All twerfers are there today to just kind of go over the machine, and either next week or the following will be like we did with the excavator where they do operator training.
So you're gonna start practicing on dark color road?
I don't know if that's the right road to start for the first day.
If you get a demo somewhere too of that, I'd like to actually see the operations on that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, the plan is.
There's something flat somewhere that's.
You can.
That wouldn't be in Jackson County. Listen, we'd have to go to Clinton, and they'd probably be, they'd welcome us, I'm sure. I don't have trains. And I will not be here next Tuesday for the board meeting. I'll be at the Iowa State's Career Fair to continue our long search for an assistant engineer. So I foresee us having at least an entrance permit on next week's agenda. I will have Tom from our office present that, and if there's anything that's comes up that's real, I don't wanna say urgent, but more sensitive or a little more involved, I'll just.
Just keep posting.
But just might at least wanted to give you an update that Tom will be here for that, and, and I will not, but I'll be, still my emails will be responding that way.
Well, good luck out there. I mean, yeah, we look pretty short, but you do shirt on there, so I wear that out there.
Leave it.
Promote.
It was, like I say, they don't let this go your head too much, but as productive as you guys have been, I hate to see how productive you get if we actually get the second engineer in that office and all that stuff, because you guys have really seemed to be, you kind of hit the ground running and been able to maintain and, and run with some things, so.
And depending on what comes of, like, what follows after next week to know how much interest there is, you know, in that. If there's not much, and if we find ourselves heading down the same road we're currently in, I've honestly thought about posting it for a different position, like either as another assistant to the engineer or engineer, senior engineering tech, because with Channelworth gonna be happening, that'll take a full construction season for that bridge, and our Z fifteen bridge will be happening next year as well. We'll have our concrete overlay, we'll still have our daily, I mean, we're gonna have a lot of construction projects going on. That's gonna be a large task, so. And I foresee we, we're always gonna have construction projects, so just trying to be fair to the guys too, and not overwhelm them, but I know other part of that is that you're set, you know, it's, it's not just a temporary position, it's long-term, so you gotta kind of look at the long-term effects of that, but something I'm at least thinking about or investigating, so.
Well, foresight is what we're looking for, because again, it's easier to plan ahead than to scramble to cover or to fill gaps, because people are getting on the work, so.
Otherwise, I know other counties would be willing to share their construction staff for our projects. If that's the route we need to go to for just one season, so looking at all options right now.
Okay, thank you much. All right, next up is Ms. Shelley from the Auditor's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just a little update. Talked to Lanay. She had heard back from Laura from Plutton County and CSAC. They are, CSAC is putting Laura down to part-time, and so Laura's going part-time, and she's going back to school. So CSAC would not be available to do the drug grant, to administer the drug grant, and Laura would not be available as a project coordinator. So Lanay contacted Robert Young to see if they would be available, but the gal that would make the decision, Mary Peterson, was out until today. She came back today, but Lanay has not heard back from that gal, so, yeah. Karen was in contact, had emailed Nathan, our project, the person in, in charge of our federal grant, the, with the CDC or whoever, to find out whether we can have our project manager, CSAC, or Robert Young, whether they would be able to administer it, seeing as how it would be crossing its daylines.
Yeah, if there's other options, or who would might be able to fill in or have qualifications to be director, coordinator, or whatever you wanna call the position, but if it's the coordinator of the projects for the grant, is there any options to us as far as, otherwise, I'm talking just about giving it up, is that?
That's.
Because it's per max of three years, right? It, it turns out in three years, so we're trying to.
Scramble for a three-year, yeah.
Gap, fill a gap, so to speak. You know, the only other person that kind of jumps to mind that has that kind of access to kids, but is like the officer friendly program, you know, the, the, you know, something like that, but you're not gonna find somebody to do it for three years without, you know, longevity, so if we can't do it through the Robert Young thing at this point, it's, is it easier just to say, well, we, we tried, I mean, because again, I mean, it would be hard to say you're building a substantial program, knowing that you're, you have a term, you twilight, and, you know.
And I don't know how effective Robert Young is going to be from Illinois.
Right.
Because they don't have any, they would have to have somebody on the ground here to make those contacts, at least a portion, a large portion of the week for quite a few hours.
Julie didn't have anybody that she would have thought, oh, either that may be available.
The only one that she thought of was Laura.
Yeah.
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 So I guess while we're waiting to hear back from the Robert Young, or the answer about them is, is, do you know the steps if we decide that we decline the grant? What are the?
According to what Karen, when she talked to Nathan, it's relatively easy. We just either email or go on to the Grant Solutions website and decline it.
Yeah, it'd be too bad to turn that down. I mean, I mean, the grant pays for the, for the employment, so is the, yeah, I don't know if there's anybody that's been in that field that's kind of half, half-retired or similar.
Through the schools, when they were doing their programs and that, there was a couple ladies that were helping do the student teaching part or whatever. I'm wondering if anything that way would, if they would.
Julie didn't mention anybody like that. I can contact her, I have her, I have Julie's email that I can.
Yeah, I would touch base anyway and just say, hey, is there anybody you think that even would, you know, entertain the idea as far as, I mean, so again, three years, it's three years, it, it sunsets, but the thing is, maybe three years is enough for something.
If they don't really have any experience in doing it, and they have to start over, then you're losing half of that time, just to be hurt. So, and it's unfortunate, but I don't know more we can do, so.
Okay. I will see what Julie says, and if I get an answer this morning, yeah, we'll let you know.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you much. Lisa, you have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I need a motion to adjourn for minutes of the sitting on the twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication of official newspaper.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike, seconded by Nan to approve the September ninth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication of official newspapers. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept and place and file the Veterans Affairs Commission minutes for the July ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I would make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, seconded by Mike, to accept and place and file the Veterans Affairs Commission minutes for July ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve Resolution Number eleven forty-three dash zero nine dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-five for an operating transfer from the Rural Services Fund eleven thousand to the Secondary Road Fund twenty thousand for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
And this is?
This is just an annual thing. This is how we budget, and we just, now we advance first.
Standard operating procedure.
It is, yep.
So it's a yearly thing. I would make that motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, seconded by Nan to approve Resolution eleven forty-three dash oh nine dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-five for an operating transfer from Rural Services Fund eleven thousand to Secondary Road Fund twenty thousand for six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars effective September sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have for the board today.
Thank you.
Luann?
Good morning.
Morning.
I think I have a voice this morning, we'll find out. Calendar for this week. Twelve-thirty today is a Safety Committee meeting. Bring in downstairs in the community room. At three-thirty is a McCoke River Watershed Management Authorities Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. At four o'clock is a Virtual Aging and Disability Town Hall meeting by Zoom for any of you. At five o'clock is a Jackson County Economic Alliance Board meeting at Innovate One Twenty Year by Zoom for Don. Also at five o'clock is a Conservation Board meeting at Hurstville for any of you that want to attend that. And seven o'clock tonight is a Board of Health meeting in the committee room or by Zoom for Nan. On Thursday, September eighteenth, at six P M, is a Limestone Bluffs R C and D Annual Meeting in Monticello. Don usually attends our C and D meetings, but this one is for any of you.
And I won't be able to be there, because I will be attending the wedding, so it is meal, you buy your own meal, but if somebody wants to go, you're welcome to.
She just wants a count.
Yep, it's at the Heights in Monticello.
On, I don't have anything for Friday. On Monday, September twenty-second, at nine-thirty A M is a P E I meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Mike. At one-thirty is a Waste Authority of Jackson County meeting at the Transfer Station for Mike. At four P M is an Early Childhood Iowa Council meeting in DuWitt or by Zoom for Nan. And seven o'clock that night is the Jackson County Board of Adjustment meeting in the community room for any of you that want to attend that. And our next regular meeting will be at nine A M on Tuesday, September twenty-third. In terms of business for today, I did put on here a discussion on rescheduling that October twenty-first meeting, because our P A has scheduled, rescheduled their meeting at ten o'clock that morning, that same morning, so I didn't know if we want to move our meeting, or if we're just gonna proceed as usual on the twenty-first.
Well. That is a that we also have, we have the work session that day tentatively scheduled with the Sheriff Department and the jail for talking Manning and things like that, so. You know. I don't, I don't, I don't know how we can, we'd either have to push.
What times are made?
Ten A M. And I believe you could push it to the afternoon, I suppose, if you wanted to, and after a meeting or a different day.
It just, you know, it takes me just changing my schedule and things like that.
Right.
I don't, I would say to wait till like Wednesday or something, I could zoom in, because I usually do anyway, it's just. I don't wanna make adjustments, and then they inadvertently, towards the end, they're like, well, we gotta light agenda, we're gonna cancel, I'll be here anyway, you know, so.
Right, right.
Do we move our meeting up till like eight-thirty and push the work session to maybe Thursday morning?
We could do, we could do that. I could even do eight o'clock on that Tuesday.
Benson, how long you need to get to Dubuque if you're going to Dubuque?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in.
Yeah.
So if you do eight o'clock, does that work for the courthouse being open or not open? That works okay?
Doors open at eight.
Yeah, and that's fine with me, you know, that's totally the time to either zoom in.
Eight, eight-thirty, I don't care. If you guys are gonna drive up, you need a good forty-five minutes, you know. Can you? Legally speaking, legally speaking, you need forty-five minutes by the time you get across the cut across and back roads and, you know.
Let's plan on eight o'clock that morning.
Then maybe slide the work session to the twenty-eighth, or is that getting, we wanna slide that up a week, because you get into the twenty-eighth, you're almost in November with budgeting and all that. I don't know what they're, I don't know what they're looking for is what they wanna propose as far as a changing.
Yeah, can they go forward a week to the fourteenth?
Yeah, could they, honestly? That's a month yet.
Yeah. I know they've been talking, I talked to Becky, and she said that she'd been talking to Andrew and that, you know, so they have been working on what possible, because I was honored to ask her what she thought maybe a good balance would be, and she said, she said Andrew's talked to her, and they're kind of brainstorming together to see what would be the most efficient or whatever, so.
Well, let's plan on eight o'clock and see if they will move to the.
Fourteenth, but twenty-eighth if we have to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Uh, any other motions for that? Or is that action item?
Do you wanna reschedule?
Twenty-first, October twenty-first meeting to eight A M start, and try to arrange the work session according to a desired date.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, seconded by Nan to move the October twenty-first meeting to eight o'clock start time, and to try to reschedule the work session with the Sheriff's Department to the fourteenth or twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. The other bit of business I had was the Dittmer Rural Recycling Contract. Are we, are you ready to approve that? I have not heard anything from you. I did send it to him last week, but I haven't heard anything back.
Yeah.
I did have the opportunity to talk to Scott, actually, and I kind of run some, you know, a few changes, minor changes. I said there's some insurance changes, and there's some, what were the other changes?
The names.
I said, if you got any concerns, you better read it.
Right.
So, I didn't have any concerns. I'm not, I'm not worried about it, I have.
So the new amendment talked about, did they remove? So the new amendment talked about, did they remove? The other guy is it Scott Dittmer, our designated company representative? Because there was the other owner that was on there.
Joe Rettmeyer was. And he said. If it's okay with us to put his name down. And they said didn't matter either way.
So it can be however you want. I don't, I haven't seen any changes. I don't know if.
Okay, so it still has that Rettmeyer's name on it?
Yeah.
I think from last. Yeah, I seen that Joe's name on it.
Good.
It says four, Phil, correct?
No, it's.
No, it's a.
And.
That's what we were questioning.
So I went down and talked to John and I thought he came up with a couple of verbiage things I didn't know if he sent them to you.
I haven't seen that, but I can ask him for it.
I would honestly put or.
Yeah.
If it's okay with. Council.
Want me to text John, I haven't come down there? He can make those change, we can pass it.
Okay.
You know. Other.
Uh, the only other thing, um, I did send you the list of um appointments that are going to be expiring as of the end of the year. Um, that's basically for you to take a look at, um. I will send out my usual procedures to send out. Um, I noticed then that their term is going to be expiring the end of the year, um. And that it will be advertised as a vacancy and to let them know that they need to reapply if they want to be reappointed to that position. I haven't done that yet. Um, I don't know, sometimes like especially on um. Um, eminent domain, people are no longer eligible. To serve the eminent domain, so if you know of anybody on there that's like no longer working in the business or has moved somewhere else, I just wanted. Give a quick look over before I start sending out notices to catch anybody that we can't reappoint before I do that.
Just out of curiosity and just, uh, you know, he's been on there for a while, but um the Jackson County Economic Alliance position, Ryan Kilburg, he does a great job and all that, but. Does he live in Jackson County?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm?
Nope.
Is that a point contention for us? Is that, hey, that's just, a few people have mentioned that to me and I'm like, um, so.
And I'm not sure that's a, that's our rules. I think it's probably Economic Alliance guidelines.
He's appointed by us.
He is, and I don't know what the.
You're appointing somebody that doesn't live in Jackson County to represent Jackson County economic. Yeah, you know, and we did it with Scott Gent and the, the, the comprehensive plan. You know, because he lives just outside of Jones County, but most of what he does is in Jackson County. I, that was just something that's been brought to my attention and so.
No, I mean, we talked about it years ago, but that nobody really had a conflict with it, so I guess.
Right.
And I think there's more than just Will that's expiring on the T W B. Was that not the conversation last night?
But I, we, I think we only have one of them.
Yeah.
You guys only took one.
Will, Jade and myself are the supervisor representatives. The other ones are appointed by extension. Three are appointed by extension, three are appointed by the fair board.
Okay.
So.
So that would be why I wouldn't have anybody.
Right.
Underest.
Okay.
So. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Can John answer?
Um. I text him, but.
Maybe just buzz down.
Yeah, can we uh, take a brief recess? Okay, we'll go ahead and restart the meeting at this time after our recess and with us now is John Keys, as we wanted to just tidy up this Dittmer recycling contract. And um, you guys changed the insurance requirements a while back, correct, or added them or? With them.
That is correct. I think at the time we thought perhaps I C A P was requiring certain amounts, but they weren't requiring it. I think it was just a recommendation. Um, and so we're, of course, we're, we wanted to keep the same terms for the county. So. I think we have to repair Mr. Four Million or something from two man. That was the initial suggestion, yes.
Does that change reflected in the current contract?
Okay, Article five. The five is insurance. Um, contract I printed out, it is not in there. Do you have it? Let's see, you have an updated one, but. Can do a quick search.
I have the P D F.
You want to send it to him?
Well, it has the umbrella or excess liability down on under C five point zero one under C. The umbrella is probably, it was where we put the four million in.
Okay.
That was an umbrella.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So that's, is that in yours?
No.
Oh, yeah.
We'll make that.
So Shelley made, Shelley sent Scott Dittmer on Tuesday, September ninth. She sent to Scott the changes, um. So the revised contract, um, they made two changes on page nine highlighted and red below. So for Dittmer. It states Scott Dittmer or authorized agent is what the contract says, and for the county. Any Jackson County Supervisor member upon due authorization by the board. Previously it stated any current Jackson County Supervisor. So the change says any Jackson County Supervisor member upon due authorization by the board. That was just the two changes that.
And what under five C does it say for limit liability umbrella limits?
Four thousand.
That is already in.
Four million. Because I think that's what we came out of the conversation last week or whatever we had, so.
It was an excess liability. And this does, it's four, five point oh one C umbrella or excess liability of four million dollars. That's what this contract that Shelley sent to Scott Dittmer.
Good. It accepts the what? Yeah, what's that's in there?
So the umbrella or excess liability of four million dollars.
Okay, no, okay. Okay, yeah, we're good with that, right? So read that for the county again, any Jackson County. What did it say? It says the supervisor designated by the board?
No, with approved. Any current Jackson County Supervisor with the full approval or with approval of the full board.
So under section eleven point zero seven, the authorized representatives, the contract states. For purposes of this agreement, the parties authorized representatives are as follows. For Dittmer, Scott Dittmer or authorized agent. And for the county, any Jackson County Supervisor member upon due authorization by the board.
So due authorization means to me that this board could appoint somebody to have that be that representative. I still think it has to say that it's approved by the board.
But that was the intent of that because.
I get it, but that's, that ain't the way I'm reading it or listening to it. So that, if that's a legal term, I'm good with it, otherwise. You know, does that mean that this board, I mean, I assume that we, the board has to approve it, the three of us have to approve.
There's a.
And then do we have to approve somebody else to authorize the?
To me, the way I hear that is any supervisor with the approval of the board, which means. Let's say you, because you know him, you see him, you can't enter into an agreement because the contract talks about as an authorized agent to enter into an agreement. You can't do that without the full authorization.
You guys say, yeah, go ahead.
Right.
But we gotta do that every time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the way it read, if it just said any county supervisor. That would make them an authorized agent to be able to act without the board's approval.
Right, that, I agree.
But on that note, on that same subject, did you say that Scott recommended that you keep Joe on there?
Um, is it, honestly, he said it didn't matter.
I'm wondering if you shouldn't keep him on there and do.
Just or.
Or.
Yeah.
Or designee of their choice.
I, I mean, you could keep him under. I wouldn't say and, you know, I would say.
I mean, you don't want to have to.
It just says or authorized agent.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm wondering if you should be putting in there since they're a joint partner. And then have or authorized agent.
So how do we read word the supervisor representative thing? So do you think it reads clear?
I'm okay with that. That's now, was that what it means?
Yeah, to me is it has to be a supervisor and they can only act with approval of a vote of the board.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
So if those are the changes in there, then I think we have passed that version and we're good. If that's the last one that was sent this.
And John, how would you like the version that Nina just talked about for or Joe or? Scott Dittmer or Joe Dittmer or Joe Rettmeyer or approved agent? You want all three of them in there or just two of them?
Concerning uh, who signs the contract, yeah, authorized.
Anything, it's just.
If we're going to them and want to, want to amend something or.
For the purpose of this amendment, the parties authorized representatives are as follows. Ten, ten, eleven oh seven.
Yeah. Yeah, in the contracts, paint checks coming forward, Dittmer Recycling, of course, we all know, we just talked about uh how that has to be authorized for the board. I believe that. Um. With regard to these two, they're partners, is that what it is?
That's how I took that, yes.
One partner can bind another partner, so. I think you could do one or the other or re- or um. Or authorized agent, yeah, I think Mike, that's all right.
I, I'm, I'm good either way. You tell me, I don't, I'm gonna make, keep it simple here.
Is there any problem with having both of them sign their contract?
Yes.
Other than.
Uh, maybe, or two. Yeah, maybe.
You know, I, because one partner can bind the other partner.
Oh, well, I just want it or I think because of the fact that right, it might be.
I just feel like they're partners and you're listing one person's name. I feel like you should list both partner.
Oh, I agree. You wouldn't want to look like.
Or, or that should say Dittmer Recycling Representative.
Well, again, if you put them both in there, Scott Dittmer or Joe Rettmeyer.
Right.
Or designated representative. That way you're covered all the way through, ain't you?
Yeah, I, I would.
Then it's up to them who they want to designate to sign it.
I would use the word agent. Rather than representative, it's just lawyers understand that agent.
Okay, well, I'm good with that. I don't care what word, yeah, the agent's fine with me.
I think, yeah, because the agent can bind the company.
But I just feel like if you're list, so the last one that was sent out from my understanding was missing. The one partner and it just said or agent or representative or whatever it said there.
Makes sense, Nina, yeah.
To me, if you're listing one and they're true partners, I think you should list them both.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have no idea what their contract says as part of partnership.
Right.
That way we're covered, correct?
Absolutely.
And Lisa read again like it was sent?
Let me get down to it. So what got sent is Scott Dittmer or, and what I'm hearing is sure, I assume I can make. So are we Scott Dittmer comma Joe Rettmeyer? Or authorized agent?
If you read that that way, it just takes one of them upon things, right, John?
So are we doing Scott Dittmer or Joe Rettmeyer, or are we doing Scott Dittmer comma Joe Rettmeyer or authorized agent?
You know, um, you said we should probably check with the uh Secretary of State and see how they're organized. I'm guessing, um, I mean, they're, they're incorporated, so.
Registered agents according to the Biennial Report of twenty twenty four for Dittmer Recycling is Scott Dittmer at Radford Grove.
That's pretty much what he covered.
Secretary is Joseph Rettmeyer, President is Scott. And. Another authorized person is Shelley Atkinson. Atkinson.
That's designated.
Yeah.
That's how they want it legally to be done.
So. The only word again there. Do this for me, John, will you? Is Scott Dittmer, that's it? We ain't putting or or no.
You can put or authorized agent.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's perfect.
Which is the way that it was, okay, so you have copies of that?
For what you sent out, for what you read, I don't, I looked.
So we're reading Scott Dittmer or authorized agent, that's it, very done.
And John, you have that copy now? I'll have to go back to the office and.
I have possibly the first one Shelley sent out with all the changes.
Nine five.
Yeah.
I have the four million in here and the whatever, whenever this.
Yeah, that's.
See, I pulled up the nine five one on my email and it did.
The nine five one says Scott Dittmer and Joe.
Signature today. I don't have copy of the new one, so then I need to go back to the office quick like and print that, so. Um, we can just do that right here after the meeting. I'll print this off, so we can sign the correct copy.
So can we, we can make a motion to approve the one that is presented right here with those designated changes. Yep.
I would make that motion to approve the.
I don't think. I think you need to untable it first.
Oh. You're gonna make a motion.
Make a motion on table for the discussion regarding the contract with Dittmer Recycling.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nina, to untable the Dittmer Recycling contract discussion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, it is now untabled.
Now I make a motion to approve the Dittmer Recycling contract as amended.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nina to approve the Ditt- Dittmer Recycling contract as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Those need you on.
Luann, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Boards and commissions.
So had you, you say council meeting last Wednesday and uh everything went pretty smooth. I mean, the, the exec board met before like they always do, um. Uh, the biggest thing that made was talking and implementing how in the processes implementing is to integrate uh technology integration as far as. Just to make a smoother stream, all, you know, through payroll, through all the, all the technology that's available, I think it's redundant, a lot of the things that's being done and. And even what A I can do for them and how do we, how do we integrate that into what they're trying to do, so. I mean, I think it's a good study for them to do and. You know, she talked about, you know, we can really cut out a lot of the manpower and work, maybe not so much the manpower, but the duties to a lot of these by. Integrating the system and I, I would assume that's everywhere, you know, so. And then uh, I was very fortunate to be appointed to the executive board. So I guess I'm part of the executive board.
Did they reappoint a whole new executive board or?
No, was sixty, was there missing one or did somebody go off? I don't remember. Wrong to hold.
Golf club. Um. Workforce haven't really had much going on. Uh, they're just now starting to do their meetings to figure out how they're going to do the consolidation between the two districts or the areas. Uh, we got one of those coming up within the next week or so, um. Other than that, everything seems to be going to good. Together we build, there's some things coming down the pipe, there's fixing some things and they did a. Discount, a ten percent off discount to help rentals and it seems to really gain some traction. They did that through the month of July, if I'm not mistaken. And it seems they caught quite a bit of traction on getting some bookings, so the, the facility is getting rented more and things are picking up, but uh. At this time, that's, that's what I.
Did they ever make a decision on the? Was there a religious group that wanted to use?
There's a church, um, they were looking, trying to rent it, um, more on a long-term thing. Uh, we said we were interested, um, they uh. Then they were, I don't know, there was talks.
Stuff, maybe it wasn't going to be big enough.
Yeah.
Type of deal or.
The church they have in Clinton, I guess they're standing room only, there's people in the back, there's no room in the pews, all that stuff and. They have like a hundred and some prisoners from the Macoka, uh, Jackson County area, so that's why they were looking up here, but. Um, they were looking at a few other options, but as far as timeframes and stuff, they've kind of gone cold a little bit. They were gonna, they're gonna reach out again and talk to them and say, you know, hey, we're still a. They were gonna, they're gonna reach out again and talk to them and say, you know, hey, we're still a, if you're looking at another place, we could be a, a, a temporary thing. So, there's that in the works, great, uh, amazing grace that, um, she comes in on Thursdays. We authorized, she's renting it on uh, for three months, we did a, a three-month contract with her, she's been coming on Thursdays. People order meals, she comes in, makes them on Thursday and then she gives them out, they pick them up on Sunday mornings, so that seems to be. Gaining traction and doing pretty well with that, she's doing well cleaning the kitchen up and all that afterwards. Um, I know they're in the process of, uh, they have a donor that's willing to donate a washer dryer. So, they don't have to keep taking all the toiletries and linens down to the fairgrounds all the time to get it done and. So, there's some things going on and they're still trying to work through all the quirks, the front doors. The, the doors to the north seem to be sealed better and working appropriately. But the latest email discussion from the manufacturer of the door company. Is those aluminum doors to the south that everybody walks through, um. Aren't designed to be outside doors and those are exactly what the architect expect. And so, the daylight, you can see between the doors and all that stuff, he said they were supposed to be an awning to protect it from the weather. But again, you don't wanna see gaps in your doors, so it might take a whole door frame. Thing, and in which case we're like, uh, if the architect designed it that way, then. Maybe that's something the architect needs to think about making right, so there's discussions on that point, but.
I would again, that say that was up to legal counsel also to getting both.
No, it's a. They're working on it and because they were identified ahead of time because their year, as we started talking about our eleven-month inspection on the jail. Um, they learned, Together We Build learned, their eleven-month inspection should have been last February, March timeframe. But because some of these things were talked about beforehand, it's still kinda. Grandfather didn't, so to speak, so they're, they're still working a few issues, but they're getting closer. They think they have the lock things swi- figured out. Um, there's three locks into question, one, they're just gonna leave the way it is, the other two, I think they're just gonna swap internal mechanisms and that, it, it's just. Um, but I think we're to the twilight of the list. It just, the, the front doors to the south, the main entrance doors. Um, might need replaced because as they said, they weren't designed.
Well, they're not outside doors, obviously, we needed, they needed to do something, they're just gonna have more issues down the road.
And they overwhelmed.
The awning wasn't gonna solve the issue of you have. Daylight.
Sure, you got freezing, you're gonna have issues, so.
Then Together We Build, Together We Build Advisory Board and the Steering Committee overwhelmingly think Jeff Kilburg is doing a fantastic job. Out of all the people that have come down and talked about how to fix that stuff, the smartest guy in the room was Jeff, according to them. Uh, even when you're talking about the contractors and the, the manufacturers of the equipment. He seemed to know more about that stuff than they did, and so. They think he's a huge asset to have around because again, it gives us the upper hand on dealing with stuffs. Because they weren't even coming up with ideas the way it sounds in that meeting and Jeff seemed to have the freshest take, the most. I don't know, they said they were really appreciative of having him there because he's helping drive that horse to kinda get it home and get things fixed, so. So, huge call out to him. Him and Bobby make a dynamic duo, they do, they do good work, so we need to keep him happy. Anything else for the good of the meeting?
I'd make a motion with Nern.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike second by Nin to adjourn, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries, have a great day, everybody.